I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have something to add to the agenda. In the mayor's section, planning zone department. So today is May the first of two thousand seventeen, time is seven P. M. And the ring board meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called to order. At this time, please silence electronic devices. To comply with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the city requests that participants in this room complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of the room. That big gray thing over there. Rope call, please.
Ryan McKenzie, Eric Kevin Cleveland.
Here.
Derek Covington.
Here.
Jamie Kane.
Here.
Carol Hall.
Here.
Did everybody receive a copy of the minutes from April third, two thousand seventeen? Was there any corrections? Are you hearing now? Take a motion to set the minutes. All the members stand up. Opposed? Okay, well, great. Old business, new business. Two bridges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The two things I have for the council this evening are both first readings, and this is ordinance two thousand seventeen dash four and two thousand seventeen dash five for the K nine fund and bike control fund. Pretty much what this is doing, we're just cleaning up some ordinances. Spoke with clerk treasurer's office, who in return spoke with the state board of accounts, and we're pretty much just detailing what can be spent out of those funds and what for. So pretty much, we're just cleaning things up. So if there's any questions on what can be purchased out of that fund, we will have that documented through these ordinances. So I was coming in front of the council tonight to ask for their approval for the first reading on these two ordinances.
Is there any questions? Is this one where we can suspend the votes?
The funds do already exist. K nine fund's been put in place for several years and that, but when we've asked the clerk treasurer's office if there was an ordinance passed when these funds were set up, a lot of ordinances they could not find. So we're just going back and like I said, just cleaning things up and putting ordinances in place in a book to show that they have been passed, so. And I came in front of the council a couple of months ago with a C A C fund, which was pretty much the same thing. That fund had been set up for years. We just couldn't find anything spelling out what that could be used out of that fund or what for.
Probably hope there's no rush. I guess with that way, it's mainly demonstrated, I think, is using our own rule powers as a council and city to make sure that the funds are being used properly. There hasn't been any question that they haven't already done. It's just a matter of having it on paper for future reference.
And then I'll make a motion and if you pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash four and dash five, first reading.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
All right, just real quick, I did get a booklet out. That is not for tonight, that's for a, for the June meeting on a wellness program that I'm looking to implement at the police department. The mayor and I have spoken on it. So that's just kind of an overlay that we're wanting to do. Give everybody time to read that. If anybody has any questions, they can contact me, so.
Chief here.
Mike Dibro.
You need Barbara?
I might have to. This is a, what I'm working on is getting an ordinance for, we have a farm safety fund. It's a donation fund that we have had for the past fifteen years. And I was told this year, the state board of accounts, that we need to have an ordinance to spend money out of this account. And this is basically what I am working on, the same as him, to get some kind of ordinance so we can spend money out of this account. All this money is donated through donation letters for fire prevention and different activities for the fire department. And in section two of the ordinance, it says basically what we will be using that money for.
How much do you have in the account?
Approximately around thirty-two thousand. We have been using it every year for the past years. We borrow off our fire prevention materials and different funding out of that.
But also, they used it last year to put new meat cows on the smokehouse.
Yeah, to keep the upkeep of the smokehouse, you know.
And I think Jamie said that maybe we shouldn't have, that he thought about adding firefighters' training.
They have different classes for like juvenile fire center training, things like that, to train firefighters how to properly handle some of these things. So I think, I don't think it hurt to use these funds for those things because that's what it's all about.
I agree.
And the only question I had was for fire inspections and pre-planing materials and equipment. Wasn't quite sure that should come out here. I thought we should have that in our fire department.
And the way I look at like the fire inspection, the pre-planing, is it preventive for fire safety? I mean, we go out and inspect these businesses and stuff, you know? That is part of stopping farms and stopping issues, so that's why that is sort of in there as part of that. It is a prevention.
I guess I was thinking, when I went through it, I was, I know that sometimes you go to people's houses and help them walk through inspections, give out, you know, smoke detectors, help them hang smoke detectors.
And we do all that.
A lot of things, so. I guess that's what I was thinking, maybe not the business inspection side of it, we probably should already be funding that through the, um...
Well, you know, it also, it says fire codes and computer programs, computers annual inspections, uh, K nine things. I don't think it hurts any of that. This is a donation fund, so I just want to...
No, this is taxpayers' money, it's all, like I said, donations.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, basically, we've all talked with state board of accounts, and we're just becoming very, very strict with all of our ordinances, that anything that they spend out of this account, this ordinance needs to be specific to. So I don't necessarily think there's probably anything that you can't put in it, it's just we need to make sure whatever spend out there is in the ordinance. They just want ordinance to be specific.
I think it's important to put in there somehow, because there's times I think it's appropriate.
I just kind of, you know, wanted to make sure that we should, do this bill come before you and ask now, you know, what was spent, or something like for a larger motion out here. Do you want to add training?
I'd like to add, they add firefighter training here. I don't know if you want to just call firefighter training or firefighter training on public safety, or fire prevention. That's, that was what I was, my intention was is fire prevention training with the public firefighters training, how to do.
Firefighters' training, you've kind of covered everything.
I think so.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it is.
So Chris, you will need to be in the passage.
I would move to pass twenty seventeen dash six with the...
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Actually...
I have only twenty-three to do, seven, which is along the same line of state board of accounts becoming a charter. We have always had cash change in our office, in these three offices. But basically, we have to have an ordinance stating how much will be in each office. And this is, for instance, if someone comes in, pays fine, they gets a twenty, and we have to give them, it's a parking ticket, we have to give them ten dollars. So it would be the police station would have fifty, my office would have fifty, and then utility office would have, as you can see, five dozen more because they get a lot of cash in making water payments.
Should this ordinance also include an audit, periodic audit? Or a specified audit? And I realize it's not a lot of money, but it's not covering everything.
They can.
What basis was used to establish it? I was quite honestly, did it cost you that much?
We just, we honestly don't have...
Brandon, what's it, what's it got from the cost?
Fifty dollars.
So, sorry, so fifty bucks, so there's over a hundred, you could cover that, they did that. No, I don't know, just, I know a guy that went to the police station, he may have turned away because they didn't have the cash, you know, they didn't have the cash to put it back.
Right, and I mean, we can, we can raise it, and we can add in that it has an audit, that there's going to be an audit within periodically too. I just, I know for art, well, Brandon, I think right now yours is being fifty dollars, it's like...
Is it like twenty?
It's five.
Five.
Five bucks?
So...
Five dollars.
I mean, as soon as a guy showed up a hundred dollar bill for his health benefit, he took it.
So yeah, I mean, we can raise it, and we can fit in that it needs to be on, I did know, um, Norma Lee, Norma Lee came up here.
No.
And just kind of explain, for instance, like your office would be, because she will be counting down.
I spoke with the state board of accounts about this before they drafted the ordinance, and one of the representatives, they just said, if we have an internal policy on how we handle the cash drawers, that that is fine, and the ordinance can stand as it is. If you would like to pass the policy as well, it might not be a bad idea to see how we do the controlling internally. But with, with the utility office, there's three cash drawers, and each clerk would have a cash drawer that they're responsible for. And then I do the deposit and audit and make sure what they give me is what it says.
Should you do that daily?
I'm sorry?
Oh, it's the...
Daily. And we started practicing last week. As far, I mean, it's our daily process anyway, but as far as making it more accountable and just developing a policy, which is not written yet, we're kind of trying to tweak it and make it manageable. Do you have any questions at all about it? Previous to this too, our office had an account called Petty Cash. Each utility had fifty dollars, which we're doing away with. It was basically, at the end of the month, if we owed county supply less than five dollars, we would just pull cash out of there, get the receipt. Once the petty cash is down to where we need to buy more or get more cash, then you would do a claim back to Petty Cash, where you always kept fifty dollars in there, just for miscellaneous small expenses. It costs more paper to write a check or something like that. But the mayor requested that we dissolve that, so we'll be doing away with that account, both of those.
You say two forty, what is that? What's that? You got, so we got...
Four eighty.
Four eighty for...
There'll be three, three cash drawers of a hundred and sixty dollars each. That should be enough cash change to be able to get through giving customers change back when they pay by cash. Quarters, nickels, dimes, that type of thing, ones. They previously were a hundred, and then we had another cash bag with quarters and another, like in a safe that everybody shared with ones. So this way, each clerk will have their own and be accountable for it. And that's the way it was described to me, that it's more of accountability with the state, um, what's it called actually? All the new regulations that were passed.
Right, just the state board of accounts to ensure that we're...
It's internal audit control is what it is. I think everybody had to take the class and sign up on it.
So shouldn't we, really shouldn't we put in the four eighty for just the utility office instead of...
State board of accounts wanted to split between each utility, half and half. I know. Yeah, I requested it just come out of one utility. Easier.
You don't have cash drawer, they don't have money to conduct business.
Yeah, and a nutshell, that's what it is, money to conduct business for cash paying customers.
Okay.
So, you want to raise the police amount to, what, a hundred dollars?
I guess I would ask Brandon the questions, how much cash do you need to conduct this?
I'm still...
You're welcome.
I would say at this point, fifty would be enough. Really, the problem we have is people that want to use debit cards, that we just would not be able to afford to do that, but usually fifty should be plenty.
Yeah, that's the big difference between, that's why I asked Norma to come out, her office, they're actually customers daily all the time, we are very, very, you know, to do this. And I think what Norma was saying was they wanted to split it, right? They didn't want to...
Yes.
So, you need to ask this now?
Sounds all great with anticipation.
I'll be back in a minute.
We deal with the board works. I'll make a motion to pass two thousand seventeen day seven, my first reading.
Real quick question, are we going to add a process for how that's, for the control of cash drawers, that process, or are we going to add a second?
Standard, I would do the internal.
We can, we need to come up with a policy. Actually, this is just an ordinance. On top of this, we're supposed to have an actual policy for this, which we will be having soon.
Obviously, that would probably be different for the utility versus clerk treasurer and this part.
Okay, so I've got a first, a second. Second, any other questions, guys? Yes, please. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We did Friday, we do that Thursday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. We do Friday, the Stella program. We have all the information in to the program and everything. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting and talking about how we're going to present this to the community and go with it, and so this time we'll give you that date. We are in the running, and we're off. So, can the council papers... May...
May twenty-fourth will be when they announce the finalists. And from there, if we are selected as a finalist, we will move to the next round. And the next round will be announced, the winner will be announced, I believe it's in October. So it's going to be a long summer, that summer, if we make it past this first round. So if we chance we won't make it past this first round, I'm confident we're going to win a fest.
Yeah, me too. I, this has been a neat deal, working together with all the different groups, we're sitting there, and we decided, win or lose, we're still going to do it, there's a lot of money. We're still going to meet with our group of people, and discuss what everyone can do to help the community, and I think that's essential to lead for fire, for fire.
Yes.
So, Mike, all in the county, too. So, I just want to let us know we're off. Okay? Now, to some big business. We had a little problem with our garbage truck, the second one. Mark, it broke down.
Pretty much fell apart. We replaced one, the other one was slightly newer, but not a lot, and a week of heavy trash, pretty much everything that go wrong with it did. Mechanic's been through it. I asked him to throw me together some brief notes this afternoon. It's two thousand and four international. It has a two thousand and four Packmore twenty-yard standard compaction bed on the back of it. His report, not real detailed, it's losing coolant and oil in the engine. They said it definitely got head gasket problems. They're known to have issues with the cylinder liners, piston rings. Estimated cost just for rebuild parts for the engine is seventy-five hundred. If there's any issues with the head, they said it could, it will exceed ten thousand dollars. The transmission is just pouring oil out of it. Matter of fact, in one week, we put twenty quarts of transmission fluid through the transmissions. I wrote about that week, and we left the butter in front of every house.
The one has protection.
To rebuild the existing transmission, as long as there's no parts needed, just seals, transmission, fifty-nine hundred dollars. If the main pump is needed, and there's any hard parts, that'll be additional. If the hard parts are too expensive, they estimate a new transmission, about twelve thousand bucks. He wrote that the front kingpin needs rebuilt, the steering linkage is needing replaced. The rear springs are broke on one side, the mayor and I looked at it the other night. And the rear differential has slipped in alignment underneath of it. Springs are twenty-four hundred dollars, and he didn't get a cost on trying to get the rear end straight back up underneath the truck. As far as the compactor on the back, the floor is rusted out, the cross braces are rusted out. He plated the floor two years ago, and he said the sidewalls are at the point where he can't find good material to weld patches to. The hydraulic pump, estimated today was forty-five hundred. The blade cylinders need replaced, needs a new sweep blade. Resistance cylinder's worn out at an unknown cost, and we talked to the gentleman at Packmore, he said any compactor bed that's beyond ten years of age is not worth repurposing or trying to rehabilitate.
Other than that, it's fine, right?
Other than that, it's going pretty good. Yeah, it does have four good tires on the back. Thanks to Chief Garrett, he gave us off the fire truck. Mayor?
Yes?
Can you keep that truck off Freedom Road in Forts and Ireland? We have a wellhead protection plan that's probably not good for it.
I'd like to store it in Fifth and Ireland, in the back.
Fifty thousand dollars, have you even tried to take it to the same truck?
Or more. Let's see.
How much is the new truck?
Jerry and the mayor had an opportunity, they went to look at some equipment last Tuesday, with best equipment.
It was around, the one that we looked at was about a hundred and sixty thousand, similar to what we have now. But we really went up there, I had any ideas, but we went up there to look at the...
Leafpack.
Leafpack, and the, we're looking at a...
Boomer.
Boomer, where you raise it up, you pick up all your heavy duty stuff and throw it in the back of that, instead of taking the bobcat and run it around, tackle it, do it that way, and they had a used one, so we went up there and see it. It's big, I said that for it. It's big. But then, while we're there, we did look at a couple trucks, garbage trucks, and so we come back and come to this, all this stuff.
The firm furnished the last one, I called them last Thursday. He called me back this morning and told me that if we wanted the heavy truck like we have, with the high compaction unit on it, it would be mid-September before we could get rid of the truck. He also said they did have a medium compaction truck sitting on a freightliner chassis, similar to what our other one is, and I got the quote of just before the council or the board works meeting, with an NJPA price of one fifty-one, five fifty-four. To give you an idea of the difference between the regular compaction and the heavy compaction, it's first of May, I went through the trash tickets for the month of April. It was as close as it's ever been between the two trucks. One picked up a hundred and forty-four ton, the other picked up a hundred and forty-five ton. But because of yardage and the compaction density is what we pay most of our fee on, is cubic yards, we had equals of pounds of trash. One truck cost us sixty-three hundred dollars in landfill fees, and the other one cost us five thousand. So the new truck saves about thirteen hundred dollars a month on landfill fees. A month, for the month of April. I'll pass them down.
But if you wanted the larger, the heavier duty compaction, you wait until September?
I just can't get one, that's the worst part of my budget.
Both sides, both sides of the case, if we get the patch, you get twenty yards.
Twenty yards.
Isn't that tip for one, too?
It does. But I don't know. Well, I don't know. Mayor, you've seen the one.
Oh, tipper, yeah, one had, one tipper.
The one that I had quoted is just like our other one. It's got two tippers, it's got the cameras, it's got these other backup lights.
I don't know if that had all that. I know that it had one tipper.
We're not ready to buy one today. We just want to make you aware of our situation.
Well, we might buy one soon.
But we're going to have to do something.
We can. We got one truck right now. We're running them all day.
What we're doing is, I've got a crew coming in at seven. They're running till.
Noon.
Noon. The other crew is doing something else. They take lunch at eleven, so when the truck comes in at twelve, they've already had lunch and we gave them extra hour runtime. Today we got done, it was about three forty. Tuesday, we should make it. Wednesdays and Thursdays, we'll probably have to work over to even get through the day.
We got a holiday coming at the end of the month?
End of the month doesn't make it any worse.
No, I mean the holiday.
The holiday at the end of May. Yeah, I don't know what you do when you have to run two days in one. We have. We really just don't have a lot of options. I looked at a lease, I checked with a lease company that Big Trucks was who we leased when we had an issue here several years ago. It's about fifty-six hundred dollars a month to lease one.
When you buy a truck, do you, do you buy it just outright or do you take payments on it or?
The last one we bought outright. Mayor and I sat down and looked through our fund balance in the tipping account. And we would have the capability to pay for one straight out and still have sufficient money to operate our tipping fees. Since we changed a few years ago with the amount of trips we went to the landfill, we've actually built our tipping fund balance up to where we've been able to pay our tipping fees and generate some money. And that's how we actually paid for the first truck last year.
It's painful, but I think, I mean, if that's where we're going to go, I think we'd be better off, even if they had to wait until September to get a higher compaction ratio. It's going to pay off in the long run. We just. Yeah, three months, three, four months.
Three months, August.
Twenty thousand. Twenty thousand dollars.
Compared to thirteen thousand.
In two years, you pay for that back.
The compaction, fifty, uh.
Or is it? And that truck's going to last you more than two years.
Are you referring to yard fee savings?
Yeah. I'm just saying, if it's thirteen hundred dollars a month.
Fifteen grand a year. Fifteen plus, fifteen, six a year yard.
Fifteen grand a year, one year you paid off fifteen of that twenty thousand you cost to rent a truck.
Sixteen, eighteen months you have to pay. And then you're, and then the rest of it you're making, I don't know. So it's, it's a little more angle in front.
Well, the question is, do you think this is a emergency? Get this or do we wait four months? And I don't know, you know.
Do you have another option as to where to get another truck?
We borrowed some for a day.
Yeah, we, we borrowed one for a day or two, we looked at issues from Bestway.
But, but he's saying he could rent one fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-six, I believe. Maybe six.
Who was, who was you at what time?
The name of the company we utilized last time that I could find, it was called Big Trucks. When we borrow, we get the one that's sitting out back that they don't use anymore.
That's worse than what you borrowed.
Even if you have the charge repaired, it's still going to down. It's going to take a month.
Right.
It's two months to fix it.
Yeah, and the problem is, you're going to fix the, the chassis, but you're not going to fix the back half of it. The compactor, they said, they're supposed to focus, they said you're wasting your time. And Jerry feels the same way. I mean, we patched and welded patches on the inside, worked it through, we patched the floor, repatched the floor.
I would, I guess, can we look and see how soon we can get around it? And then maybe we consider renting it for June, July, and August. And we just got to make do in May. And we make do in September if we're going to buy another truck and, and. Three months over the summer.
It's going to cost me a little bit more.
Try to open it in September. I, I, I think that's what we have to find out. One is if we ordered the high compaction, how soon we can get it.
Well, he told me mid-September.
And they only build it to the quarter?
Pretty much. I mean, I have been through, I've been on every website. I think the mayor has looked at some of them. I know Jerry's looked at some of them. You just don't find them. They're not sitting on the lot. Nobody wants to. I, I talked to this, he goes, he goes, you know, he goes, I'm going to sit in Genaps, he said, but I'm not going to put a hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck on the lot that I might sit on for a year and a half. Kevin, Kevin understands.
Are you a cabin chassis? That's it, there's a cabin chassis, there's not, it's like what they do. I can agree with Jamie that we're replacing it. I, I would say we're moving towards a high compaction truck. You get thirty thousand dollars a month in savings. Of course, there's a cover, three months of that.
Even if we rent it for four months, I mean, if, if we called to rent one, we're not going to get it today. Let's say it's June first, if we get one. And that covers it for June, July, August, September.
I can't remember how long in advance the last time. It wasn't that long. I mean. Eric, you remember, when we contacted Big Trucks, we probably had that truck within what, two weeks?
Probably.
The rental unit?
Yep.
It comes pretty quick. But it's, it's a little expensive.
I'd be kind. Rent one until we get a new truck and provide a high compaction truck. Is that what you're doing now with your shows? You pay all the time?
Today, we didn't. We made it with about twenty minutes to spare.
Do you figure, we've got a holiday at the end of the month. You got the Fourth of July coming up in there. And then you've got Labor Day coming up in September. Those, those days are where it's really going to, I mean, you're switching, trying to do two loads in one day.
Two days.
We might be able to make do, but when those holiday days come in, we're. To that, or. We're going to pick up loads on Saturdays.
We have the money available. I think it'd be easier like that. Just less than rent a truck.
And, well, I have a problem. I think that's a very good idea. And then we'll have to bid out the other one. Chris?
The Dodge one went through the NJPA where they've already bid those trucks. I think that's who Jeff utilized for his, because he was contacting me when he went through the back line. And as long as it's been through the NJPA and it's a nationwide quoted price, and that's what, the one that I got, it just came in this evening. I know the bottom of the quote says NJPA price.
Just make sure it is.
And you can contact the NJPA and they can get it back pretty quick and let you know.
If not, it has to be advertised in about ten days? It's all special Board of Works meeting. Make it happen.
And I have not had a chance to even look at this. I don't know what this truck is. I just know that it's a PT one thousand, which is the lower compaction, because we bought the P five thousand for the new truck.
And is that what you were writing up?
Yeah.
I'd like to have two trucks today. But yes, I, I mean, on the long run, yes, you probably would.
What's the life of the truck?
They say ten years. We're keeping ours too long.
Okay, no, but do you think the ten year life of the truck?
Yeah.
So it's, it's thirteen hun, it's thirteen hundred dollars a month in yard fees. It's over ten years.
It's not, it's the truck.
It's the truck.
Yes.
It's the truck to have. So do we need a motion here or just this discussion?
I would, um. Well, I think we need to make a motion that we're going to lease a vehicle for at least four months. And after that, you know, we're also going to look at get quotes or bids or whatever and bring it up to the next board of commissioners, next council. Or, so I'm good, I don't worry. You can make the decision back tonight to purchase a new vehicle with, you know, that in mind or what he's talking about.
That's, well, that would sort of work, so.
I guess what we need from you would be authorization to use the funds per the ordinance that was adopted in two thousand fifteen or sixteen to use the tipping fund fees for the purchase of this truck. And then we're good to go. After that, as far as the actual decision to purchase goes to the Board of Works. But we need the funding and mechanism so that we can do that.
We make that motion, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Twenty dollars.
The motion will be that the leasing, what have the tipping fees for leasing a new truck or a garbage truck. Plus, we're also going to look at purchasing a new.
And we're authorized to do that.
We're authorized.
Motion is three.
Any other questions? All of fair say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Okay, next I have down here is a land and zone zoning part. What I'm looking at is I'm going to, our back, our building commissioner. To be added to the zoning building. Uh, right off the right, Ron had written down the odd stuff that he's doing right now as the engineer. And I've been noticing the last, I don't know, three or four months, you know, he's working a lot of hours. And he's got a lot of projects and I'd really like Ron to be working on my road projects. As you see, we have several down here on the bottom. And what I wanted is to hire a building commissioner. This person will be taking care of the zoning. The organsis, I want, I want us to be pushed a little bit harder than what they are now, check. If that person can get out more, check around, see things that are there. And so. I was considering using my edit money for this project. Because it's a development, a development project for our concerns, a department of our city. So, I just kind of want to see what you guys thought.
My, my only concern was, you know, funding long-term road position. If we use data monies to fund it this year, I don't think that's long-term, you know, right? We just need to make sure there would be a budget that we can fund that position.
Right, right. Since we do have agencies in Canada quickly. So, but I, I feel like that we're really falling behind on ISO regulations and stuff like this and, you know. Ron's been, every time I turn around, he gives Ron a new project. Ron goes, I'll take it, you know, and he takes it and he does it, but I feel that he's just, it's made me an overwhelmed.
Well, I think we pass a lot of these ordinances and just hope that they're carried out and if no one's forcing them, we're just meeting rubber standing ordinances.
I don't like that.
They're not worth the paper they're written on. And if this person can, can actually do that, I think it would, I'd benefit the city.
I would support it as well, but had, but a few people, it's one of the topics of my life since my neighbor, you know, has, you know, grasses twelve feet tall. So, but, but nobody's there to enforce the ordinance.
Right.
We have cars setting in lots. I think it is one of our districts. Mine seems to be winners right now, I think.
I just wanted an observation to you guys. I had some dealings in the past with a professor from Ball State. And he wrote a planning, was part of writing the planning book for small towns. And you guys are always concerned about the comprehensive plan and seeing that implemented. That is actually the planning board's job, so this position would just be perfect to set your benchmarks and make sure that that gets followed and utilized. Just wanted to make that observation.
Do you need this discussion developed or just? I would think we need, I need a motion that, uh, to, uh, put this building commissioner on.
Do you think there's a motion of dis, dispositions?
Yeah. Resolution motion to everyone. So we have records showing like what I do, you know.
His salary, that's how we discuss it.
I have been, I've been talking to a person and we discussed salaries. They'll be at some exempt status so that, you know, we have your four to eight.
This position did exist.
Four, forty-five.
Go on.
Top end, yeah.
It's been a while. But it did exist, so it was already in.
So, that's based on, I just want to make sure that you was okay with it. So I, I need a motion or a resolution.
So I'll, I'll make a motion of support, the mayor's request to hire an ordinance officer with funds for the person coming out of the edit fund. And we'll look at it later and what the budgets are.
All of fair say building commissioner.
Building?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? All of fair say aye?
Aye.
Ooh. Thank you very much, guys. I think it's very important. Um, also, I wanted to bring up about, we talked about. Well, maybe I'll let there and tell us about our, our Board of Works.
Do you want to jump in there and add anything to take away and then you go right ahead? Okay, Board of Works tonight, Chief Garrett asked for ten thousand sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents to purchase, um. I can't hardly see my, our gas monitor. That was approved. Road closure for the tenderloin throwdown was approved for Wendy Blake, new business, Strand and Associates, uh.
Road closure for the tenderloin throwdown was approved, uh, for Wendy Blake, new business, Strand and Associates, uh, brought the, uh, pay application number one for the wastewater treatment plant project, a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And, uh, this is for mobilization, bonding, and insurance. Jeff Smith, uh, asked for engineering services for the Montgomery Road sewer rehabilitation, uh, sixty-two thousand dollars. That was approved. Chief Bridges, uh, Bridges, Chief Bridges, promotion to offices. Eric Lust and Jacob May, the first class patrolman. He also filed an amendment to the towing policy for the city. And the amendment, uh, included what can be searched if a car is towed. And the new amendment says, or the new policy says that there, an inventory has to be taken before it's taken to the impound lot, as well as, uh, the car is illegally parked or impeding traffic. An officer does not have to call the tow truck, he can go ahead and move the vehicle with permission of the driver. And then, uh, he also asked for some disposal of equipment, he's going to be taking that to recycling. Ashley talked to us about disposing some equipment, that would go to Maddox, that is deemed that it's not sellable, then it would be destroyed. Ron May, uh, talked to us about the proposed addendum, uh, agreement for professional services for Veterans Way Overlay District. The amendment, one, we passed the amendment, uh, to allow for the amendment, the amendment. And, uh, the tip for the, the development commission is paying sixty-eight hundred dollars for that. Uh, that will come out of their funds. That's it.
Okay. Also, we talked about, uh, grass clipping. If you throw your grass out in the street, it doesn't get sent to you, and you can keep it inside, there is ordinance on that, so we need to kinda watch that also. Our stolen grains, if, the citizens, if you have to see it, cover, you know, take time to just uncover it, it's in your...